Kathy?
Yes.
Is the claims right?
Yes, the claims are correct. I can't believe you would ask such a question.
Well, that's what I, before we get started, that's what makes sure.
Yes, the number eight four two six eight eight two is the correct number to be paid. Thank you.
Hey, remember for the first, like, what, couple of months, I got every number wrong.
It was his number, dyslexia, not mine. For the record.
Yeah, it was a problem. People just enjoying it. Is that gonna be, that shouldn't just be your food review order every week? Should I just say your food review is my food review order?
Yeah.
I have six o'clock.
I mean, you were waiting for that one, weren't you?
Call to order, council meeting for May tenth, if everyone would stand for the pledge.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic, which expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, let's the decisions of this body guide us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilman Lau? Councilman Gornau? Councilman Grove?
Here.
Councilman Salters?
Here.
Councilman McNeese?
Here.
Councilman Ravellette?
Here.
Councilman Stangle?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here. Adoption of the agenda.
Uh, make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda as presented.
Question?
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And the agenda is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Approval of the April twenty-sixth minutes.
Make a motion to approve the April twenty-sixth meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question?
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, they are approved. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances? And committee chair reports?
Uh, next Monday at City Hall at six, the, uh, Events, Projects and Planning Committee will meet. Uh, we're gonna start basically kind of a walkable city series. Nice thing about it is we've already got basically all the pieces that we can have set up. We've passed, you know, ordinances like the complete streets. Um, we're doing improvements like that, so now it's kind of, what else can we do to improve that? I've done a little research over the past week, and being able to do this adds not just, um, you know, excitement in the community, and people want to be out and enjoying the community, but it does entice people to come in, and obviously, that's a big thing that we're doing as well with housing. We know that Vincennes is a place that people want to be. Uh, things that we'll discuss, obviously, the big thing to start off with with crosswalks in areas where, uh, citizens feel that they need crosswalks, but then, you know, sidewalk improvement, maybe new areas of sidewalks, maybe shading, maybe connecting areas, all those type of things that you kind of throw into that, and this is kind of a discussion, open-ended, um, not just for the committee itself, but we would also encourage others from the council, uh, to come as well.
The U A had a, had a, uh, meeting set up for tomorrow night, but it's been, uh, canceled, and, um, the next meeting date has not been, uh, uh, not been approved yet. I'll announce that later, I know where it is.
And the Pantheon Building Board, we met, uh, just to update on the E D A portion of that, the, they, they got, uh, two bids for that, which were, you know, way over budget, so they're going back, uh, eliminating pieces of that, like some of the electronics, um, just various portions of the inside, and doing what they're called value engineering, and gonna get more bids to try and get that under budget so they can continue forward.
Any other? If not, report to city officers. And then, public comment.
My name is Brad Crouch. I live at four sixteen West Jefferson Street, and there's a cat problem down there. Is there something we can do about the cat problem? I've called the police department about it. I was told there's nothing they can do about it. I've called the animal shelter about it. There's nothing they can do about it. They come out and picked up all the cats once, took them, and they complained the whole time I was out there getting them, how malnutritioned it was and everything else. They picked them up, they took them out, got them back up to good health, had them all, uh, spayed and neutered, brought them back out and dropped them off at them people's house, so they can go through the starvation part of it again. But they come over to my yard, they're two doors down from me, they come over my yard, poop in my yard. Then whenever I mow, I run my trap, or my mower through it, and it smells, put my mower up, smells up my garage. They get in the trash and everything else. I've got furniture on my front porch. They get up there on that and they pee on that, so it's for right now. The people on the corner, they ain't got money to pay for that kind of stuff. I mean, heck, they ain't even got money to feed the cats. So is there something that we can do about these cats?
Have you, you said you've contacted the animal shelter?
Yes, sir.
Cause I've got her, the director here, she can come up and address this. About the program that you do, and come, you can come up here.
How many cats are we talking about?
Several. I don't know exactly how many, but there's several.
Leah Reagan from the Vincennes Animal Shelter. Um, we do, um, a program called T N R. Uh, the Humane Society also, um, does the T N R program. It's called Trap Neuter Return. So, um, there's an estimated twelve hundred stray and feral cats all over the city limits of Vincennes. We can't possibly take them all in and stay no-kill, and they are, um, by city ordinance, allowed to free roam i- if they're fixed. So, if you see one that's got it ear tipped, it's been fixed and released back out in the community. The idea is, when you release them back to where they came from, you're gonna keep other breeding cats from moving in, and then, over time, your numbers humanely go, naturally go down instead of up, because they're not breeding, and they're keeping the other breeders from moving into that area. But you're gonna draw as many cats as you have a food source for, so if you have neighbors that are feeding, then it's just gonna draw more, more and more cats. And I know we have done T N R in, um, several locations, um, in that end of town. It's a manpower and a money thing, but we have-
One of the questions I have about T N R is, how, how many more cats could do T N R today? I mean, do you, I mean, are half of the ones that are feral, are they taken care of, or do you, do you have a, a good grip on that or an understanding?
Well, it's, for one thing, it's having the manpower, because those traps have to be checked, you know, every couple of hours, or, you know, with summer months coming on even more often, so we have to have communities, um, out, you know, community volunteers, people that live in those neighborhoods volunteer to help with the T N R, the checking, setting, checking the traps. Um, and, you know, we've provided traps and the, the canned cat food to put in the traps, and, and then, um, help through our, um, shelter's spay-neuter fund to, to have them fixed, but we need community volunteers to help do some of the groundwork for that.
But you, like, Mr. Crouch, you could loan him the traps if he'd watch them-
Absolutely.
And when they catch them, they can call you and they'll pick them up and-
I, I know, Leah, we, we became a part of that. Our, our neighborhood was the exact same way. There was at least fifty cats. And it did take a while, but we would go out daily, and we've, you know, became a part of that T N R program, and it has worked incredible. Um, you, you take it out, they, they have never turned us away. When we have one trapped, uh, we'd take it out to, uh, South Gate, and they would, um, spay it, neuter it, and then we would, they'd call us the next day, we'd come, you have to be willing to bring it back to where you trap it.
Right.
Um, but our population has diminished so much in the last two years, uh, but it does take time.
So, I guess my question, another question is for you, and is, do you have, i- is there some outreach programs that you do to try to inform neighborhoods that, that that program is available, and that we would, looking for volunteers?
Well, because of funding and manpower, it's available on a limited basis. Um, we just do it out of our spay and neuter, neuter, um, budget for the shelter, so we also have to use that for all of the shelter animals that come in. So, the Humane Society does do that too, but they do it on, on donated funds. Um, so it's, it's, um, I mean, we, we have targeted several neighborhoods in the last, um, year or so, but we have to have the community volunteers to help out with it.
How many cats do you, um, treat a, so, but how many cats do you treat a year?
Oh, gosh, um- Ballpark figure, probably, I don't know, maybe, uh, five hundred. So, every cat that we bring into the shelter before it's made available for adoption, it is spay or neutered. So, um, but they, you know, they can breed out, you know, and live, exist out, um, in city, in the city, and, um, so it's, it's hard to get a handle on that population, but spaying and neutering the T N R program is very effective. You have to target the, the whole area, not just hit a few of the cats, but you have to get all of them in that area if you want your numbers to go down. But if you would be interested in borrowing some traps and trapping some cats, we would certainly help you to have them fixed, but they have to be released back to where they came from.
See, that's not gonna stop them coming over into my yard and crapping all over the place over there, and, and getting up on my outside furniture and stuff, you know? I mean, that stuff ain't cheap. And, like I said, them neighbors, they ain't gonna, they don't care. I mean, Yutz was out there and picked them up, a bunch of them, and then spayed it and neutered them and brought them back out there. And Yutz complained the whole time Yutz was out there getting them about how malnutritioned it was and everything else. But then Yutz take them right back out there and turn them out to be now malnutritioned again.
Well, that's the way the T N R program works.
Yutz are just pushing them cats to suffer some more.
No, that's not at all what we're trying to do.
Exactly is. I mean, Yutz picked them up, didn't know what they was going through to begin with. Yutz talked about how skinny they was and everything else when Yutz picked them up. And then Yutz bring them right back out there and drop them off at the same place.
But because we're a no-kill shelter, there's really no other options. I mean, we, if we housed every cat in town out at the Humane Society, our entire budget would be for housing cats.
And just like Leah said, uh, we're talk, looking at what, one thousand two hundred? At least. I mean, that's probably a low estimate, I would guess.
That's the estimate, just based on, like, square miles and population and, and things like that of our city, that's the, the, uh, estimate. But, I mean, we can't stay no-kill and just go out and get all the cats in the community.
Right.
I understand that too, but is that cruelty to animals? I mean, to leave it out there and let it get malnutritioned like that?
I think it's a program that's supported and sponsored by the Humane Society, so.
We've been to, um, uh, different, uh, uh, things with the Humane Society. We've been to the Humane Society conventions and attended courses and things on the, on the T N R program, and, uh, we follow those steps, but it takes, it takes a community, it, it, it takes a village to, to solve the problem, not just a few people or one city department going out and rounding up all the cats.
So, when we, when we talk about, I just wanna try to get clarification for this, because, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts. When you target it, when you target a specific area, how big of an area do you typically target? Because obviously, there's a point where a target becomes too big and it's not beneficial. So, when, when we target a spot, whether it's you and your group has decided that this is a problem area, or somebody from the community comes in and says, this is a problem area, so what, are we looking at a city block, a couple of blocks? What are we looking at?
Um, yeah, usually, I mean, there, the cats tend to all kind of gravitate toward the same area. Um, it can be a block or a couple of city blocks, but a lot also depends on how many volunteers. You know, the people in the neighborhood have to be willing to keep an eye on those traps and to, you know, help take those traps to the vet and drop them off, and then, you know, we've paid for the spaying and neutering of those animals and help re-release them. Um, and we go out and we do catch, you know, trap some of the, the feral cats and fix them, um, and release them, but it, it just, a lot depends on the funding available, the community volunteers that are willing to help. Um, you know, we'd love to T N R every single cat in Vincennes city limits, um, but, you know.
But I also see-
But more importantly, it'd be nice if the owners of these animals would get them.
Absolutely, yes. Absolutely. If owners would spay and neuter their, their cats, um, a lot of this problem wouldn't exist.
But the problem is, the, these cats aren't owned by anybody. No, nobody is gonna-
The area that he's talking about-
People down on the corners got a bunch of them.
Are they hoarders?
And they let them in and out of their house and everything else.
I mean, that's a different-
Are they animal hoarders?
Yes.
Is that a whole other thing?
That's a different, that, that's a different argument, then.
That's a whole different-
That's a different, completely different argument.
They won't let us in their home. Um, they have allowed us to take in T N R some of their cats. Um, some of them that we were able to get when they were off their property. They were, I, I don't know if they were stray cats or their cats, but some of the cats in the area, we were able to trap and fix.
Here's my question to you, is then, when does the health department become involved in a situation like that?
That would be a question for the health department.
I mean, do you guys talk to them back and forth about those kind of situations? Somebody's a animal hoarder, it creates a health issue?
But not just, but not just you guys, but just maybe a resident even files a complaint that there's an issue with that area. Is that, and that's another-
Yeah, we have been called in by the health department and went in and helped with hoarding situations like that.
That's how it goes. It's health department, then you, not you, then the health department.
I mean, oftentimes, that's, there's either, you know, um, an adult protective services or child protective services involved, and they call the health department, the health department calls us.
And then that's how that-
Okay, so.
Also-
Okay.
Tell us exactly how quick cats can reproduce.
Oh.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, a, a female cat can get pregnant again while she's still nursing a litter of kittens.
I know, I know.
And they can re, they can have-
They can have, you know, two, three, four litters, usually two to three litters a year. But, and a female cat can have another litter while she's still nursing a litter.
And how many is in a litter?
Four to five, and then if those four to five aren't fixed, then they-
Fifteen, and then those fifteen, when they get to a certain age, they're gonna start breeding.
Yep.
Cause it's-
Right. And it, it, I mean, it's, it takes a whole community to fix the cat problem.
Right.
People often get, you know, upset with us, but it's not something that four or five individuals at the shelter can fix. It, it takes a community and community effort.
And we have a T N R cat at my house, so I, I understand, I mean.
Yeah, and it's not just, I, I don't think it's just a budget or a volunteer thing. We need to make sure that we get the proper information out. Like, I mean, communication, community, I mean, you kind of hit on that.
Spay neuter your pets, please, yes.
I know you guys are working as hard as you can with the limited amount of resources that you have available, um, obviously. I mean, just cats, if you guys focus just on cats alone, just on cats alone, um, I, I mean, you still would be swamped.
Yes.
You still would be swamped.
You could go over there and collect twenty cats today, and if you don't eliminate the reproductive problem of, of the cats, you, next, you know, in six months, there's gonna be twenty more to pick up.
We could T N R all the time, non-stop, and if people aren't spaying and neutering their pets, it's, we're never going to get them all taken care of.
Correct.
Leah, I know it's a delicate balance on your, on your neuter budget. How quickly do you exhaust that budget in a year? I mean, do you try to hold-
We ha, I mean, month by month.
You exhaust it each and every year, I mean, but is it?
We have to pace ourselves.
Yeah, okay.
But you also have to remember that every animal that lives at Animal Shel- Shelter is spayed or neutered, so that budget also has to cover.
Absolutely. And that has helped-
Even dogs, and it's not just cats.
It's not just cats.
Right, it's dogs too, and we have seen that by, uh, spaying and neutering every dog and cat that, that we adopt out, that over the last, what, seven or eight years that I've been out there, I mean, the population, the stray population in town has gone down.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, but i- if people aren't spaying and neutering their own pets, um, then it, you know, i- it's very difficult for us to keep a handle on it.
What's the current cost to spay and neuter?
Well, um, that depends on the size and weight of the animal. I mean, it can be anywhere, it depends on the vet. It can be anywhere from, um, eighty dollars to two hundred dollars, but if there's complications, you know, that could go up. It just depends on-
So do, so you, do you pay for complications as well as, you know, if you get a stray cat in your-
Well, being the shelter, we do, um, get a discounted rate on our spays and, and neuters. But if there are complications that come up on, on a spay-neuter, we have to pay for it, just like, out of our spay-neuter budget, just like anyone else.
So that means additional surgery, you pay for that? If, if it, if it leads to that, or it, do you, do you co, consider that a, a done deal then, at that point, and just?
Uh, it, there's a lot of variables there. It, it depends. I mean, if it's, um, a complicated spay-neuter could be a spay of an animal that's in heat. But, um, a, a, additional surgery, it just, it depends on the severity, and we rely a lot on the advice of the veterinarian as far as what to do with that, where to, how to proceed.
So, it sounds like if you're willing to work with Leah, Leah will work with you.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but like I said, I mean, if you do take them spayed and neutered and bring them back out there, I've still got the same problem that I've got now.
But it's a long-term fix. What is, there's no, there's no short-term fix that we can come out and-
So it sounds like I've got one problem in the house, too.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
And we have went to that specific home twice and fixed many cats.
And you just can't go in this-
I talked to Brad earlier today about other stuff they've got out there, too, but-
Sure.
Just because somebody has animals in their house, we just can't go in it and take their animals.
I understand.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I'm, I'm, I mean, I know back to go, back years ago, there used to be a, uh, an ordinance in town or whatever. If you had more than five animals, you had to have a kennel license. I, I guarantee they've got more than five cats in that house.
But if you go out and they're ear tipped and you ask them, if, a cat walking by on the sidewalk, nope, not mine. You know, that's what we get a lot of. People, you know, s- not everybody will claim what's theirs, and, and we've went out there and we fixed as many as they would let us fix, or as many as we found, um, you know, in the surrounding area to try to alleviate that problem.
So, what would happen if I was to trap them and take them out to a farmer's place that likes cats for mice and stuff? What would happen on a deal like that if I would do that?
If they don't belong to anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they don't belong to anybody and it's humane, and they're not being harmed, then there's nothing wrong.
Well, I've got a live track, I mean.
Yeah, it, there's nothing wrong with that if they're going to be, you know, privately rehomed to a, a, you know, an area where-
I mean, the key thing being, you know, we're, we're about being humane in what we do. I mean, that's one, one of the things that we pride ourselves on. And if, you know, it's not somebody else's cats, it's stray, and you've got a place that you can take them to, and you know that that's what they're gonna be used for, yeah, I mean, we would almost encourage that.
Validity to his statement about the kennel license?
Um, did, if you have so many unspay or neutered animals, if you're, if they've been allowed to, um, have a litter, you're supposed to have a breeder's license.
Okay. How do they, how would a person apply for that, and how, how's that, tell?
Um, for a breeder's license, a person would have to bring their, um, vet records out to the shelter to apply for that. Um, they'd have to show, you know, that they're, um, vaccinating and getting the proper medical care.
Do, I mean, do we ever citeate, uh, write any citations for that? Does anybody ever get cited for not following?
Uh, we, we-
It's pretty tough, huh?
It's pretty tough, yeah.
Okay.
We, we do have, um, you know, people that come in yearly and, and bring their vet records and do get a breeder's license. Um, but it's all the stories that we pick up in town.
Those aren't the people we're worried about, though, right?
Yeah, we're, we're, it's, once again, a different situation than we got here.
Yeah.
It's-
So.
Just to throw my two cents in, Chief's gonna plan.
And I'll even-
This is all under public comment.
I will, I will rely on our legal counsel also. Even though from time to time, they're not going to admit ownership of a cat, if they see what they perceive to be their cat that they have denied owning, and they consider it their cat, they'll be real quick to complain theft against the person that's gonna turn loose at the farm. I'm just throwing my two cents out there. So, that- It's in your yard.
Is there any way to, any way to prove that they own the cat?
If it's microchipped.
That'd be it.
Okay, yeah, bingo, bango.
They're not microchipped.
Right.
And the T N R program, do you chip all the cats?
No.
No.
Just spay and neuter. Yeah.
No, we, we don't, um, you know.
It's too expensive to-
It's too expensive to do all the T N R cats. That's why they're ear tipped, so if somebody, uh, traps a, a cat that's already ear tipped, they see that it's ear tipped, they know it's already fixed, and they can just let it go and reset the trap to catch one that's not fixed.
Does the ear tip also indicate they've been chipped?
No.
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 No. The ear tip indicates that they have been spay or neutered.
Yeah.
So if a cat is not ear tipped, it can be taken somewhere else, right?
Well, even if it's been ear tipped, it's probably, that, that's a, uh, feral cat, correct?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Cause there's, there's, there's been no ownership.
Most times, yes.
Good point.
Yeah.
Most times, yes.
Yeah.
So, if they're not wearing a collar and tags, or, um, they're, they're checked and they're not microchipped, or, um, then they're-
Yeah.
They're just stray. Well, there's a difference between stray and feral. The ferals aren't approachable. You can't touch them. They're scared of you. Strays, there could be some out there that are ear tipped that are just strays. They don't have an owner, but they're friendly.
Yeah.
Very informative public comment section.
Yeah.
We're always looking for volunteers to help with the T N R.
Thank you, guys.
Brad, thank you very much for bringing that attention to us.
Thanks, Leah.
Yeah, thanks, Leah.
Leah, thank you for the work that you do. I know it's, it's a lot.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll move to, oh, business. First up is Ordinance Eight, twenty twenty-one, amending the Vincennes Code of Ordinance Fifty, one fifty point seven zero to add access to main electrical disconnect. Your first reading was April twenty-sixth.
Uh, make a motion to read, uh, for second reading of Ordinance Eight, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to have second reading of Ordinance Eight, twenty twenty-one.
Eight, twenty twenty-one, uh, is an ordinance which amends one fifty point seventy. Uh, it adds access, uh, to the main electrical disconnect. There is a, uh, three-section, uh, amendment. Section one primarily deals with, uh, the requirements of that main electrical disconnect, but it also, uh, gives the departments of the city access, uh, to those disconnects in the event, uh, of some sort of an emergency in order to ensure safety. Section two, uh, then states that the amendment is compliant with the National Electric Code, uh, two thirty eighty-five. And finally, section three, uh, would give the amendment, uh, immediate effect upon passage.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, we had our discussion with this a couple of months ago. Went over pretty lengthy. We were all, um, for this, but then we had to get some clarity, um, and Brad worked, uh, with Mr. Roligan to make sure that that was cleared up and what we needed to be taken care of. Uh, I do thank Brad, because in every ordinance that he does give us, he always makes sure that we're gonna work with the citizen and make sure that they understand it, and if they need help with this, that they're gonna move forward. So I do appreciate the work that Brad has put into this. Um, and with that being said, let's, question?
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
And second reading passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Uh, make a motion for third and final reading of Ordinance Eight, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of Ordinance Eight, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, eight, twenty twenty-one, again, it's a, it's an amendment to one fifty seventy. Uh, it states the requirements of the main electrical disconnect as well as giving the department, uh, of the city access to such disconnect, uh, at all times in, uh, in the event of, uh, an emergency to ensure safety.
Discussion?
Question?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And third and final reading passes by a vote of seven to zero. Next is business updates.
Okay, uh, so we've got a great update when it comes to businesses. Our businesses are doing really great. Uh, people are coming in, they're enjoying it, they feel kind of freer. I mean, things are going really well here in Vincennes, Knoxon County, in Indiana and southern Indiana. We've really hit a huge pocket. We'll get into that in two, uh, county metrics, but things are really good when it comes to, um, In Indiana and southern Indiana, we've really hit a huge pocket. We'll get into that in two uh, county metrics, but things are really good when it comes to um, COVID, when it comes to our area. Things are really rocking and rolling there. Uh, the key thing that I want to kind of emphasize tonight, and I might go on a different tangent than what you'll probably hear, is the key thing that you're hearing from most of our businesses is that they need help or need workers, all right? And this is going to be something common that you see. So the different tangent, we're not going to get into a talk about unemployment, we're not going to get a talk about pay. The key thing that I want to emphasize here is what we've discussed moving forward, and I think this is a good thing to kind of focus on, is we're a community that supports each other, we rally around each other. So I guess this is a different pitch. I kind of threw it out there. Um, if you've got extra time, um, and you've, you've got, there's businesses out there that if you've got an interest, go spend some time there, well, work there, do some things to help that business out. Quit laughing at me. Um, the thing is too, um, also, if there's a business that you go to a lot, that you enjoy, maybe put some extra hours in there. Uh, if it's a family or friend business, I've got a couple of friends that have businesses that I'm helping out with. Um, I have my mother who's got numerous businesses that I'm helping out with because they do need help. And the key thing is right now, i- this is, we've got to be able to support each other. I know it might sound hokey, it might sound corny to be able to say certain things like that, but we've risen to the occasion time and time again. Uh, and then this will be a way that we advocate. Obviously, um, there's other issues at play, but I do know Vincent's, I do knox, know, don't know Knox County, and we have been very successful in supporting each other. This might be a way for us to be able to support it. End of my soapbox when it comes to helping out our businesses tonight.
Expect to see you at the shop in the morning.
I will, I, I'll be there regardless.
And I'm going to add to that, uh, my office has recently finished handing out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our local businesses, small businesses. Uh, we just finished that round, our second round, we're getting ready to sign an agreement uh, with the state. We'll get another hundred and fifty thousand to offer these businesses, so.
Same requirements on that.
Same requirement.
Just, just an update on that, Joe, you made a couple of people very happy because they stopped and talked to me when they deposited their check.
And I, yeah, I got numerous calls, uh, thanking you and, and the council for that too as well, so.
And is that next round with the food pantry?
And the next round also, we have a hundred thousand for local food pantries.
That's what I thought too.
That's awesome.
Kind of waiting to hear that. All right.
Okay, next is county metrics.
All right, we're back in blue, and if you look at our numbers from last week, cause remember it's a week behind, should be in blue this week. Uh, the key indicator that we've been looking at, we've been able to pinpoint, and so Mayor and I have gone over number after number, is that positivity rate. If we can keep it under five, we're typically going to be in the blue. Um, and we've been in that last week, we should be in it this week. If you look at kind of the broader map, uh, southwest Indiana is completely blue. Most of southern Indiana is in the blue. You have some orange parts that are in the northern part of Indiana, but other than that, Indiana is doing great. Uh, a couple of key things that we should kind of uh, know about and make sure that you guys know about, uh, the clinic uh, that's out at Community United Methodist, they're going to be kind of reverting that back into the health department. So they'll be out there till the twenty-first, and then on the twenty-fourth, they'll be back at the health department. And they'll be releasing their schedule as they go. Uh, Dr. Stewart has said that, you know, it's kind of, kind of be a work in progress, just like it was when we went out there to try to figure out what times work best and how we're going to do that. Uh, we will also kind of be phasing out of the Moderna and going to Pfizer, and the reason being is not because there's any issue, is that the Pfizer, when you get the vial, it gives you fifteen doses and the, I mean, the Pfizer gives you five, the Moderna gives you fifteen. So you don't want to waste anything, and that's the key thing. Uh, so as we have vaccinated, 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 and I think the number that Dr. Stewart gave us is we're getting close to vaccinating eighty percent of our adult population that's eligible for this, that's fantastic. So you don't want to waste vaccine. So it's not that we don't like the Moderna, it's not that we haven't think that it's been good, it's just, hey, we've got a, we're able to save this and make sure the shots get in arm with the Pfizer one. Um, and they do have the Johnson Johnson that they're using in certain situations. Um, obviously, they, they go through the checks and things like that, but everything's good on that front. So uh, the clinic will be rolling into the health department just to make sure that you guys know that moving forward. Um, but other than that, we are in a really great spot, and it's allowed us to be in a position that we are. Our community feels really good. If you look out and about, there's people out and about enjoying our community. They're going to businesses, they're spending money, um, and they're just enjoying being together, and that's what we want to see. The key thing is, we just keep following our protocols. We keep that in the back of our mind, that we remember that that's still out there, it's still a possibility. I think we're going to be in a good spot. Um, and I, I don't just think, I know we're going to be in a good spot, and I know that's something that the mayor and I keep trumpeting as we move forward.
Mr. Salters?
Yeah.
Will we be keeping track at any given point uh, for the young adults that are getting it? I know that they're, they're currently giving Pfizer out for those. Are we keeping track of the young adults and knowing how ma- how much of that population we've got as well? So that, because I know Moderna's fine, but what about Pfizer and treating those, because they're going to approve that for twelve on a, so I was just wondering about the population in between.
Right.
You know, eighty percent of adults.
So you're, you're talking, I, I just, you're talking about the population from twelve to sixteen?
Yes.
All right, so I know that data is kept and we've got a data, like that data gets sent to the state level, so we can break that down, and even on the state database, the database, the COVID database, it'll be able to break it down and show you specific demographics. I don't know if it's specifically twelve to sixteen, but I wouldn't be surprised now that, if that's an option, because today we started doing that with the twelve. So the, I would look on that and I'll take a look on that and I'll email you guys unless you know where that information's at. It might be something where it's twelve to eighteen or something like that, but I think that we'll be able to break it down, and this is just scrolling through it today, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll be able to get you some numbers.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll move to new business. It looks like Katie Taylor was on the agenda, but I.
She was on the agenda, mayor talked with her. Uh, she's going to go brainstorm, and I think she's going to come back to Board of Works with some different ideas. Um, so.
Next is claims.
All right, and that's because, claims making uh, motion to pay the amount of eighty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, because that's what she said. Kathy, am I right?
That's correct.
And you said it right, too.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure.
Got a motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to pay claims in the amount of eighty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Any question on claims?
Question.
Mr. Ravellet?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And the claims are paid by a vote of seven to zero, move to miscellaneous.
Um, just the two things I got for notes, Mayor. Pool, we're still on track for the pool. I just want to make sure that we reemphasize that, so everybody knows that.
I've been assured by Steve Beeman that we are on track.
Yep, so just want to get any rumor out that we are on track for the pool. Uh, second, I know the commissioners are having a meeting on their ARP funds. Um, and people did ask me about getting public input on that right now. Obviously, we will take public input as we go, but we're basically just holding ours as we go along, and because of the restrictions, there's really nothing too out of the normal that we can do with it. So we'll wait, we'll hold like we talked about last meeting, and I just wanted to kind of clarify that because I know some have asked, well, why aren't you doing a meeting similar like this? Well, because the funds are set up a certain way, and we did say that we were going to hold and wait till we got clarification, in the hopes that we'll be able to use it for other things. If it does get to that, we will definitely take public input on that.
And if this, if the restrictions are real relaxed right now, it can replace tax dollars lost, which is motor vehicle, highway and local road street for us. And I believe uh, revenue loss for utilities, which there wasn't any. So right now, that's all.
Yeah.
Can't go to replace money in a general fund or to do special projects. Every bit of that is restricted.
And it's pretty set in stone, so we just wanted to clarify that, you know, this is what you can use it for. So I know a lot of people have a bunch of ideas, great, but the problem is that they said that this is specifically what you have to use it for. We discussed this a little bit last week. Uh, the mayor kind of laid out the specification for that. Kathy, you sent us the information specifically for that, so I think we're in that position. If it does end up opening up, we'd love to take public comment, and we would welcome it, but right now, because it's so selective.
Right.
There's, we're really kind of just sitting and waiting this way.
Okay. Move to public comments. No public comment for the good of the order.
All right, let's start off in District One, Councilman Grove.
Um, mine would be uh, Burkhardt's uh, citywide cleanup. Uh, incredible what they do in one, in one day, uh, throughout the whole city, more than most people, you know, do all year. Uh, but man, it makes a huge difference, what they do.
Yeah.
Uh, and also the uh, the Pocket Park, I, I know, I, I, I mentioned that they were going to do some mulching and stuff like that. Uh, that group uh, did some land, the cleanup of the Pocket Park there. I thought it looked really good.
Good. And it should be mentioned that the Pantheon staff or the people that worked in the Pantheon did that.
Yes. Yeah.
All right, good news in District One. District Two.
Uh, another shout out to CSX, six more uh, improved railroad crossings in the district. Um, Greg Park, uh, I was driving by one afternoon last week and saw a man out at the, at the, in the Vaughn um, walking trail landscaping, and he was, looked like he was looking for something. So I went back, I went to the park and it was, and he told me he'd rather have his name not be told in the meeting, just, just, he just did it as a random act of kindness for, while his dog, while his wife was walking the dog, he was out pulling weeds and trimming some of the stuff off of that, so uh, he said he actually does it on a regular basis. So I thought, well, I appreciate him doing that and, and not that the Parks Department isn't doing their job, but he just wanted to felt something that needed to be done. Also, uh, new business uh, in the strip mall, um, that's across from Denny's, uh, mortgage, mortgage masters. They had a ribbon cutting last week. Jody Chesser is the manager. Uh, the long awaited, over a year, uh, China buffet has reopened, and uh, Jerry's really happy about that, and they've been busy uh, since they opened on Friday. Uh, he's, I appreciate the community's support and them coming back. Talking about another business, uh, Culvers now has an active website where you can go in and apply for a job anywhere from um, manager to, to every position it appears. And um, their official groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled for June, for June ninth. And uh, I, I only mention this because um, Councilman Grove didn't, it was, it's a Pantheon, it was at the Pantheon, but it's in, in his district, but I attended it, so I thought, um, at the Pantheon Friday night, the seventh, the uh, Knox County CEO program had their trade show, and it had a good turnout. I was there for quite a while, and they're great. Eight, eight new entrepreneurs in town or in the county, uh, that are, really have some really interesting uh, ideas and uh, really thinking out the box and really look, some professional uh, setups at their trade, the trade shows, really, really well attended. Um, that's all I have.
District Three, Councilman Stangle.
District Three, um, just a few days ago, we had a ribbon cutting on the Charles Hedy uh, Medical Education Center. I think it's a great addition to a great facility that we have. We're lucky to have a hospital of that quality in this community. Um, the Historic Review Board has given the Knox County uh, the go-ahead to tear down the old um, Records Library. It's uh, the old building next to the Work Release Center. Um, some of you may know it as the Oak Jail. Um, they're not going to, uh, they, the Historic Review Board doesn't want them to just put in a gravel um, lot there or whatever. They, they want a green space or use it to build on. Um, and uh, Mr. Shelton's taking all the records and storing them in a nice, decent, dry place. Um, nine out of the cross, nine crossings that we have in District Three, most of them are all back open again, uh, except for um, Thirteenth Street Crossing and Fourteenth Street Crossing. And um, also, um, I've been, I've become an avid walker, and I walk in Greg Park a lot, and Saturday, the uh, Walk with a Doc is uh, uh, going again this year, and it's nine o'clock AM every Saturday for the next several Saturdays. And uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Stangle. Councilman Ravellet?
Okay, last Thursday, May sixth, I had the pleasure of attending the uh, National Day of Prayer in the Greg Park Shelter House. Very well attended. There were nine local ministers, different churches, different denominations. Also, Mayor Yocum was there, and uh, Mr. Parsley, the Superintendent of Vincent's Community School Corporation, and Knox County Sheriff Doug Vanlon, uh, they, it was a very good event, I think, and, and some of the things that were prayed over and prayed about were the youth of our area, federal government, state government, city government, addiction, racial tension, schools, abortion and women's issues, pastors in churches, human trafficking, the military, church unity and law enforcement. So it was, like I said, a very well-attended uh, program, and it meant a, a lot to a lot of people. Also, I wanted to mention, I don't know if, if uh, it was voluntary, but the Community United Methodist Church has, had provided the pavilion for the vaccination clinic. And I think they deserve a shout-out for making that facility available, and I know they gave a lot of vaccinations.
Thank you, Councilman Ravellet. Councilman Lau, what do we got?
All right, well, um, I just, yeah, for the uh, as moving through town and playing Frogger around town, just trying to get around and uh, around the railroad tracks, I will tell you though, it is, I have gotten um, out visiting with people. Uh, they tell me that they're, even though that it's a little bit a, a little bit difficult sometimes to uh, maneuver, they really did appreciate that. Uh, they said, driving over those tracks have been a uh, a pleasure now, uh, moving back and forth, so just a, a thought along the way, thank you very much. We, we do appreciate that, so that's what I've got.
All righty. Councilman McNeese, did anybody steal yours?
No, I got a couple things too. Uh, one, uh, Saturday mornings rendezvous, if you've not been out there, the rendezvous grounds uh, are, are starting to come along and look good, and every Saturday morning, if you have the, the want or the desire to hold a weed eater or a hammer or anything like that, you're more than welcome to go out at eight AM and they'll put one in your hand. Uh, the next one I have, uh, last week, maybe a little more than a week ago, Toyota announced fourteen hundred uh, new jobs in two years. Um, and I know we have the KCDC director here today too, but uh, just as, to put this in perspective, the trickle-down to us will be pretty immediate. Uh, you'd start talking about FIA, uh, TBIL and VU Tech, where we have workers from our community that go to those, those places, I know VUTICs and VU Techs in, in Princeton and the other ones in Lawrenceville, but those workers will be moving towards Toyota, uh, which puts even more emphasis on the factories that are within our short range of needing employees, which then, as the dominoes fall, gets back to our housing. And I, I appreciate what the KCDC is doing on housing and, and hopefully we'll get the preliminary results for that uh, study that you're doing. Uh, but I think even, even more uh, a- at the forefront, housing for us in this community is going to be important, so uh, good news comes with a little bit of extra work for everybody else, so that's it.
All right. So uh, when we come back to meet, uh, next time, school will be out. Um, who would have thought, then when we started the year, that we would have been in school the whole year, and we're one of the few areas, when you think about Knox County, um, we went in-person the whole year. Uh, not a lot of school corporations can say that, and Vincent's, North Knox, South Knox, Verbay, we can all say that, and that's a huge, huge accomplishment. Um, I know all the planning and preparation that went into that this year, uh, it's still going on. We still got, you know, a week and a half left. That um, everybody was kind of preparing for the worst, hoping for the best, and the best did happen. And a lot of that has to go to the, uh, thanks to the teachers, uh, the administration, uh, the students, and you got to thank our community because we all really kind of rallied around each other to make sure, I know it's a common theme, but we made sure that our kids were able to go to school. Uh, we followed the protocols even when they were annoying. You know, we did the quarantines when we needed to. Uh, took the kids to the doctor immediately to get those notes and make sure that they were taken care of. I know at times it was frustrating. We did have some bumps in the road, but we did it, we made it through, um, and the kids got what they needed, and that's in-person education. Um, you could even look throughout Indiana, and there's still places that are just doing two, maybe three days in-person, um, and the rest online, so a big shout-out to all the schools uh, because the end of the year is here. Um, and also, I just wanted to, um, obviously, the news of Steve uh, stepping down, um, I just wanted to thank him uh, for his service, sixteen years, sixteen years of service in the Parks Department. Um, and Steve and I have a special relationship. He wa- he gave me my first job as a day camp counselor. Um, and he kind of uh, let me be creative and learned how to calm me down a little bit, so I'm not so destructive. Um, we did break a lot of stuff at the Y early on, but we had fun, and that was the key thing. Um, by accident, of course, we created a new dodgeball game we were very proud of. They still play today out there. Uh, but Steve and I have this special, and he, and he kind of helped, kind of guided me, lead me, and um, really kind of helped me become better in kind of that work field, and when I took a teaching job, you know, you, you still kept in touch, but you didn't know if you'd ever cross paths again, and when I was on council, it was nice to be able to work with him, um, again, in improving our parks and making sure our parks are in fantastic condition, and I think our parks are one of the best things that we have to offer in the city of Vincent's. Um, I mean, he, the events that he brought, the updated equipment, all those type of things, obviously, we throw Rainbow Beach in there. One of the big things that he did a couple of years ago was pooches and Pokemon. You probably are like, that doesn't make any sense why he would say this. That's the event that my daughter fell in love with a tiny little Chihuahua, and we adopted her, and she obviously has changed all of our lives. Um, so there's, uh, there's a lot of connections that aren't city. Um, so, there's, uh, there's a lot of connections that aren't city-related when it comes to Steve, and I just wanted to be able to thank him, uh, for all the work he's done, and just, uh, kind of being, uh, being a friend and looking out for me as a young adult, getting into, I guess, sort of an adult as we move forward, so I just wanted to thank Steve, so thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, it's your job.
Uh, echoing what Tim just said with Steve, you know, he did serve sixteen years, uh, has done a tremendous job. We're really gonna miss him, but I also wish him best, the best of luck in his new adventures, uh, and, uh, hopefully we'll get somebody to replace him that'll pick up where he's left off. Uh, he has assured me that the pool is ready to open, uh, Memorial Day weekend, so, uh, his last day will actually be the nineteenth of this month. Other thing, paving, uh, I'm happy to announce that Forbes Road will be paved, and we'll start paving at the twelfth, which is Wednesday, and it should be completed by the fourteenth, so be glad to get that project completed. Uh, it was delayed because of COVID, it was actually supposed to be completed last August before school started, so it's good to see that, uh, come to completion. And I also had the opportunity the last couple of weeks to visit Cub League and Girl Softball, they both kicked off their seasons. I'm excited that all, all, all our local youth are out playing ball. Uh, I think Cub League's got somewhere around six hundred kids playing, Girl Softball has two hundred and twenty, and I would encourage all of you to go out and see the facilities, you know, as the city gives twenty-five thousand dollars a year to both of those. Uh, the improvements they've made out there are just amazing, uh, and I know the kids greatly appreciate it. So, uh, if you want to see some good baseball, just go out to Cub League or Girl Softball. And the last thing is tomorrow evening, six PM, right here, there is a public meeting on the Washington Avenue Project. NDOT is doing this, this meeting to, uh, get public input, so, six o'clock here tomorrow evening.
Mayor, I just wanted to add one thing, I want to thank Police Chief Bob Dunham and Fire Chief Brett Bowe for both attending the, uh, National Day of Prayer last Thursday at Greg Park as well. Thank you guys.
I don't have anything else, so just need a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
It's gonna be a two-day paving.
Don't anyone run anywhere.
Did I get a Miller?
Yes.